Sorry, you guys might be calling live, so you've done something.
That's fine, just let us know, so we don't like broadcast everybody and their brother.
What are their kid age frame?
You have anybody come on Zoom?
Uh, Brian, I think.
Brown? Anybody that's using me? Change your name, they think in Iowa too.
He's not about this thing.
And I got the Rosé's Expedition in my driveway.
Oh, really?
The, it has dual air conditioners running back. The blower motor up front went out.
I remember back when I worked at milk factory, of course it was heritage, but I worked at night, so I remember that bad of there.
Right.
It'd be in the nineties. But I remember back when we were mixing, we'd have the mixer on.
Is this IMAC?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because he used to have, he, he used to use steam cold water when he did that.
Fine.
And I remember I'd walk out, the rest of the way would be like ninety-five degrees, he'd walk down there and feel like walking through the, walk and freeze for a bit, so that's how hot it was.
You still have that.
Appreciate your help the other day. I think she was a little surprised when I said, the police are with me. Old Brad, that we need to send you out to, out with Urban Belt, since they can't seem to, since nobody's been out there since first week of July. Ridiculous.
Sold out of their money.
Like me and some, some vague out there. My son got angry at him, they moved. There.
I feel bad for those guys out there playing league ball the other day.
Who cares?
I thought it was brutal.
We're out there last night, you know, we're bad enough.
I should have printed my off.
I can imagine Saturday.
It just, I keep looking on my iPad and it, it's just, yeah. I wish we had some plugins up here, yes. I don't have access to a printer right now, I've been into school for so long, so I don't have any access to a printer, it's, man, I just had to buy my own, that's the problem. I've had to do that for years.
Is that something they can?
Always has something to do, can you get this printed off? No, I can't.
No, I can't.
Yes, I can go to the library. Five thirty-five, I'd like to call the meeting to order, if you could join me in the collective agents. Okay, moving on to the public comments petitions and morals, I'd like to read this, the proclamation for the National Night Out twenty twenty-five. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime, drug and violence prevention program on August fifth, twenty twenty-five called National Night Out. And whereas the forty-second annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Hiawatha to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police, community, crime and drug prevention efforts. And whereas Hiawatha Police Department plays a vital role in assisting the citizens of Hiawatha through crime, drug and violence prevention efforts in Hiawatha and to supporting National Night Out twenty twenty-five locally and whereas it is essential that all citizens of, citizens of Hiawatha be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs and violence in Hiawatha. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety awareness and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Becky Shamberg, do hereby call upon all citizens of Hiawatha to join the Hiawatha Police Department and the National Association of Town Watch in supporting the forty-second annual National Night Out on August fifth, twenty twenty-five. Further, let it be resolved that I, Becky Mayor, Becky Shamberg, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty-five, National Night Out in Hiawatha. Becky, anything you wanted to add to all of that?
I don't think so, just, everybody needs to come out.
It's always well attended. And there's lots of people involved, there's, I mean, usually you've got the fire trucks and ambulances and stuff.
Other social services will be there.
Bring hot dogs. Yeah, yeah, it's, I appreciate all the work that goes into it, because I said it's definitely a community event that, that there's lots of people out there. Hopefully it'll be a little bit cooler than where it is today, so. Moving to the consent agenda, is there anything?
There was nothing bad to that tonight.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, it's going, emergency second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Jane? Motion passed five zero. Nothing on our old business, heading down to business to school resource officer update for, doing?
Good evening. This month, before school got going, and everybody got busy with that. Just give you guys a little bit of an update on the SRO program. Uh, we've actually redone our MOU with USD four fifteen as we move beyond, uh, the grant period. It's now completely locally funded, um, actually by the city. Uh, is the way we're doing it now, the school district pays nothing for my presence. Uh, reason for that is my time split between doing SRO and investigations both. So I'm a little bit of a busy individual, but we've still been doing great things and moving forward to improve the SRO program. Uh, Captain Williams and I are now both Alice-trained instructors, Alice is the, they say an active intruder uh, response that the school district likes and likes to use, uh, we already got that scheduled with, with all of the staff uh, for the school district to go through that training as well as the students wants us to get filming. Officer Nigus and I are both, uh, they're certified officers now. Um, she and I are gonna tag team a little bit there this year as we continue that into its second year for the school district. Um, one thing I've done recently is I worked up an MOU between the school district and the Brown County Sheriff to where, um, the emergency dispatch center will actually be able to get emergency access to the cameras for us to help our response in whatever emergencies occur within the schools. So it's nothing big, just a couple of minutes of your guys' time, just to let you know what we're working on doing.
That's a great idea.
Our school districts, our school district, so, so, do you guys have any questions? I know that was really quick, but I didn't want to take up a whole lot of time, so.
I appreciate all you did, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Just a couple of weeks away. What we doing is sixteen, is the first day, I think, for kids. New staff shows up on the eighth, so, yeah, it's, summer's over. Anyway, okay, then I'll, I'll through the twenty twenty-six budget discussion.
Um, give me just one second, I will pull this up on my, uh, so I can share this on the screen really fast. Okay. Okay, so what I'm going to do here, I'm gonna use my Zoom feature here to kind of help everybody out. All right, we do need a bigger TV, I do agree with that. And so really what I want to look at today, as far as our city budget goes, is what I've done over the past really, all, all throughout this past, uh, week and a half, since our last meeting, I've gone through, I've been able to look at the numbers that we have coming in now, to get some of the projections as to what I think the end of the year is going to look like. As far as what a lot of our live items go, that, that was something that was missing in some of our, in some of the previous versions of this budget. And so I wanted to go through and I wanted to have, give everybody a chance to really look at that. And, uh, and just point, point a few things out here, kind of explain, you know, everything about the budget. And, you know, answering questions anybody might have, you know, I, I sent this out. And I, I'm here to answer any questions anybody might have about our budget. And so, you know, going through, you know, anything that you see in like, say a five, so if it's like ten, eleven, like fifty, ten, for example, it's always going to be procedural. Anything with, with a six is going to be contractual, and so that's going to be like any kind of contracts that we have, things like that. Uh, seven is commodities, eight is usually capital outlay, and nine is always transfers. And so when you're reading through the budgets and you see these different light items, that, that's, that's what all that means. And so normally, if you see a six number, that's something that we know we have coming every year. And I'll get to that with water, a good example of that would be our, uh, our maintenance contract, it'd always be six numbers, I, it's, it's, we have two water system maintenance, and I know that can be confusing at times, but we have one for contracts and one for supplies. And so, eh, eh, just kind of going quick through that. Going through, some, some of what I would like to point out here is when you go down here, especially under subsidies, I know that there's, there's some white, there are some pages on here that I've now taken out. I know that there's, there's some white, there are some pages on here that I've now taken out. And we used, we used to have a separate page for, for, uh, uh, Heffin used to have a separate one for fireworks, a separate one for ambulance, but I've taken those out now. Those subsidies have been coming out of the general fund for a long time. Heffin has now been moved to the industrial fund, which is Fund twenty-two, which is why if you look at our budget this year. You're gonna notice that we only have, you know, there's nothing in there for Heffin, that's actually coming out of the industrial fund. And that's due to the, that, that, that is due solely to the, uh, um. At the sales tax that we have coming into that fund. And so if you come down here, and really what we want to get tonight and discuss in length, because really what affects us most. Is there is one thing here on, um, administration, there's a building maintenance, uh, line item. We have been notified by our, uh, I believe the elevator company. That we need to be making an upgrade to our elevator, which is gonna be quite expensive. And so if you see that one line item that has a, a larger number, it is for that elevator maintenance. And we do have a building ma, there's a history center, but we don't have enough income in that one area. We're gonna cover that kind of an expense. And so i- it's going to be, I believe, above twenty thousand dollars for that upgrade. It's a control board that needs to be done, and that's just to make sure that we're, that we keep our compliance with ADA. Um, as far as other things in here, fireworks, I still have that budgeted for this next year. Planet boxes are also still budgeted for this next year, I did up that a little bit, up to five hundred to seven thousand, I, we did sixty-five hundred is what we had been doing. Costs have gone up a little bit. Now, out there this year, you know, they've had a good year because of the rain and the weather that we've been having, the plants have really gone. They've been doing well up there with cleaner boxes, they look really nice, um. But when we get down here to our transfers out. And so. Like transfers out to the pool, what I'd really like to, for everybody to look at here, is our transfers out to capital reserve. So their transfers out to capital reserve, and there's a reason why I have all this highlighted in red. That's because we haven't decided on how, how far we're going to go with this capital reserve this year. But this is really gonna be what affects our budget the most, especially with our, um, especially with our property taxes here. And so forty thousand four hundred for the, this is just for administration. A lot of that, what I have budgeted for there is, it, it's, um. We're proposing that we go, that we get a different software. For our billing, for really our city software, we're, we're proposing to change that. Like I said, I, I think I kind of covered that in the last one, in, in the last meeting that we had. But the reason that we're proposing this is because we've had a lot of trouble with our crime software. You know, a lot of the points that I would like to run for everybody, I can't because they're inaccurate. You know, so when, when I look, when I look at the reports, I know that the information is inaccurate, just because there's been things that have been doubled in it. Into this over time, and it's just caused inaccuracies in our software. Now, getting the support that we need to get that fixed has been very, very difficult. And so, eh, as anybody knows, a lot of what goes into software is the support side of it. You know, we have a lot of difficulties that really held up on, um, this year because of the difficulties that we've had. And eh, you know, it's just from what we're hearing about the software company that we have now, it's, um. You know, there, there's a lot of people that are having a lot of problems, that's what, that's why we are, um, suggesting that we go with a different software, that's why that number is so large. Because that can, yes, go ahead.
Okay, let me interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
Do we pay, uh, we pay yearly fee for that, right?
We do.
Where is that buried in the numbers?
Number would be buried up here, probably in professional IT or. If either, it'd be a six, somebody may look at it real quick. That should be, oh, what would that be, Jane? Do you have any idea? Uh, due subscriptions and miscellaneous fees is where that would be coming out of.
What's the?
So that would be sixty eighty-one, and so what we do is we actually spread that out. Amongst a lot of different departments, that's why it's hard to say, like, this next year I have seventeen thousand budgeted for that. But if you go, and that's one of the good things about our budget, is that sixty eighty-one, no matter what fund you're in, will always be due subscriptions of miscellaneous fees.
So that was my second question, you, and you just answered it, you, you. Uh, spread that cost out over some of the departments, so everybody uses that software.
That is correct, yes. And so we spread that cost over, over a lot of departments, so it doesn't hit just the general fund. And so we're not only hitting just the, um, property tax for everybody. So that cost is spread out among a lot of different, uh, um, quite a few different funds. But when we're talking about. Um, capital improvement for next year, we're also looking at, you know, just budgeting, we're, we're trying to make it stable. Uh, year to year, as far as like, uh, the transfer out goes. And so what we, what we're doing, we're budgeting five thousand dollars a year, just for technology upgrades, that can be computers. That's anything that could be like a server, we had replaced a server this last year, something that does come up every now and then. That way we have the money available for that, that's one of the things that I really would like to do this year with the, um. Eh, with the capital improvement plan, is to make this sustainable going forward. What I really want to avoid is having a very, very large, um, expenditure. One year and then going back to nothing the next, because it, it causes a lot of fluctuations in the budget itself. It can, it can be very, very difficult to contend with. Now, like I said. Software can be, you know, we, we could be talking, you know, like six figures here, I haven't budgeted that much. But, but I have budgeted for years out in the CIP plan in order to reimburse that cost back into that capital improvement plan. And so it's, it's a very large upfront cost, but there's money coming back into that. And the rest of this is just that reimbursement back into the capital improvement plan, and that's for that engineering. Yes, go ahead.
Does the capital improvement fund have more money in it than what you show as a beginning balance?
It, it, no, so that beginning balance that you see, eh, I can't remember exactly off the top of my head, what is that? Should be.
Well, for twenty twenty-six, it's forty-six thousand nine hundred seven.
Yes, and so that is what we have now, and so what I, what I have at this capital improvement point. Is get, how we're funding that in there, and so I don't have any transfers coming in. And so if you go over time, that's what we have, um, going out, but eh, it's. Right now, that, that is a balance that I, that I can see, is that beginning balance. And that came from our treasures report, and that, that's a report that i- is very good within our current software.
Can I ask another question? I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Do you make questions? On the, where is it? On the contractual for administration, we got attorney fees are a lot less than what. Their budget is a lot less than what it's been in the past, or last year, or this year, ten thousand versus. Estimated cost of thirty-one thousand. Does that sound right, or?
That, that does sound correct, and then that is due to the, uh, AHS lawsuit.
Okay.
And so eh, eh, we're hoping, you know, to have some resolution to that, and so that, that, that is why we have that cost there. That's why there's such a difference.
And then there's one on engineers and architect, I had a question that. It's in somewhere here, are we gonna try to do anything with First Ohio as far as engineering fees?
As, as engineering fees goes, eh, something I'd like to do, something that we can look at in a few different budgets, we can look at that in the street budget. Which is what we pay the, for those traffic signals out of, um, that is something that. You know, I'd like to have some discussions about, definitely, to have something done with First Ohio. I know that's what, when they came back, that's what they told us that we needed to do in order to get those upgrades done. It's just a, I, I believe it's just a, they want a structured study on those polls to make sure that what we're proposing.
So that would come out of streets, not?
Yeah, that would come out of streets, yeah. Although I don't think, at this point, I have anything in there for streets yet. I, I've been focusing quite a bit on the property tax funds. I do have some questions as far as the street department goes, but not that one specifically. And so right now, this is what we're proposing in the admin budget, I'm gonna move to police real fast. And I'm gonna zoom this in as well. So, once again, in police, we have. If we come up all the way to the top, it's the same, it's, it's the same, you know, a lot of the budgets are gonna look very, very similar, fund to fund. And then that's true across all the funds. Is we have our salaries, six will be contractual, um, when we get down here to our. We go all the way down to where we have our. Capital reserve, what, what this is really geared towards here on our capital reserve. Is trying to find some kind of, some kind of replacement program for the police cars that we do have. We were sitting in pretty good shape right now as far as our police cars do go, but I, as everybody knows, you know. Police cars are one of the things I get the most while I was putting them, because they're always patrolling, um. So what I've done is I've, I'm putting, I got thirty thousand dollars a year into the capital reserve fund. And that, that'll get us a new police car roughly over two years at this point, um. Mickey, I don't know if you had any thoughts on that, as far as, do you think that's a sustainable plan?
Yes, I don't even know if that's to be, eh, a good one to do out here, my thought is. We've made good progress on reducing the average mileage to the everyday age, we need to continue to replace them. As we go along, and I do think we need to reduce the number of vehicles we currently have over the next few years.
Yes.
Is that thirty thousand, is that what you said?
Thirty thousand towards that, we did have some extra costs, I believe there's some cameras for the interview, interview room, I believe, as well. And because it was a total number, so CIP, ERP, what do we have here? Uh, patrol vehicles, security, interviewing cameras, and key card entry for that CIP. For the police station, which is something that we want to propose for all of our major buildings. Kind of like what we have here at City Hall, that way, you know, there's been times where, I, I think I said this before, I've been stuck at the Fisher Center. People ask me for keys, if I had my key card with me, I would have been able to get in. And so it'd be something that'd be nice to have, and, and what you can do with that, you can, you can limit as to who can get into those buildings. And so it's not just going to let anybody in, it's a go, allow people into areas that they're allowed to be in, kind of like how it is here at City Hall. And I, I don't have a firm cost on that, I'm just, the seven thousand was, I think about what we paid for City Hall, so I'm just, that's just more the estimation at this point. But really, that, that's, this is what we're talking about as far as our police goes, uh, municipal core budget is pretty simple. Fire budget, once again, I talked to Patrick about this, that one was pretty simple, does anybody have any questions on either of those two, on police? Before we move on? Lights budget, lights budget's a little bit different here, really the only thing that I'm budgeting a lot for is electricity, that's just our. Costs, I really want to draw down that excess money that we have in that post lantern fund. And really use that up over the next, I'd say, it'll, it'll probably take some years to get that used up. But any kind of street light maintenance that we do to these poles, they're leaning over, that's something that I'd like to address. But that's, this is where that's gonna be taken out of, we have about ninety thousand dollars left out of that post lantern fund, that sales tax is pretty, um. As, the rules of that are pretty stringent, we have to use that for the post lantern and street project itself. And so, so, because that was the purpose of the money was brought in for. And so I'd really like to address the poles that are leaning, I'd like to address, uh, we have some areas in town right down here. Ethan, Utah, um, we have some lights that are out, and that's because a condo got hit, and so we'd like to get that fixed. And really make sure that these post lanterns are looking good for, you know, many, many decades to come. Because they should last a long time, but just with proper maintenance. And so that's why our lights fund looks the way it does, I know that there's some line items that I've really kind of taken out of there, and that, and that's why. I, I kind of wanted to explain that. Uh, code and building is pretty basic here, it's, you know, the only thing that I have in here is demolition expenses, and there's one thing. That I'd like to point out about this is we have paid off that excavator. Um, so that's why that twelve thousand is in there, we're not still paying on that expenditure, but we have paid that off. Um, any questions as far as the general fund goes before I move on? I'm gonna move to library next, and so what I've done here and what I've done with all of these firms. Especially with the property tax, I've left, I've left a property tax, and what the revenue neutral would be, the dollar amount. And the reason I've done that, and I'll blow this up too. The reason I've done that is because I want everybody to be able to see kind of this number right down here, see that negative thirty thousand nine eighty-two? That's right down here at the bottom. This is what I, this is what, the number that I want to look at, this is what, this is that dollar amount that I would need to make that budget work. Now, like I said with the library, this is what they've requested from us, and so, um. This is what we, this is what they will get, but that's the actual dollar amount, that it makes it easier for me to figure out. How much more in property tax if they would need, it's gonna take them from about five point six two six mils. To about six point four seven is where that would take them. And so, eh, that, that's where the library fund is, and all the, it's all the property tax. Funds, that's how it's going to look, um, any questions on any of that? Like I said, there's a reason why I left those, left, left those revenues flat, that way people could see that difference and how that affects the budget.
And just to clarify again, I mean, you're saying this is what they're gonna get because they, they are entitled to that, correct?
They are entitled to that, yes. And so, eh, as long as they don't hit their, uh, middle of the cap, which right now is at seven point five. Whatever they request as a budget increase, they are entitled to. And so eh, and this represents about a fourteen percent increase for the library this year, and like, going forward. I have an email out to, um, the library director. And I had asked her to come to one of our future budget discussions to kind of talk about all these things. It's the same one I'd like to have Heffin with, like for the ambulance to come, you know, we, eh, anybody that we subsidize. You know, have the library come explain what some of their challenges may be as far as our budget goes. Building maintenance, I, I don't know their budget, you know, I, I don't get to see why every one of their challenges may be, so maybe having. Them come and explain that could really, you know, go a long ways, but, um, that way, eh, either. At this next meeting, which would be on the eleventh or the one on the twenty-fifth, I'd really like to have them come and explain. All, I'd like to have all these organizations come, and then kind of explain, you know, talk about what they do. I think it helps, eh, eh, it gets the information out to the public, you know, how, how their tax dollars are being spent. And I, I, like it, like I said, I really, really do think it helps just to get that line, eh, get those lines of communication going. Um, industrial fund, this one is interesting for this next year. So with the industrial fund, what we're looking at is, this is what the appropriation to Heffin is. So if we come down here to. It's a quarter cent sales tax, like I said, so that brings in, right now I say about, um. Two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year is what I have budgeted in there. And so the appropriation to Heffin will come out of this, and the twenty-five thousand is in there, what makes this fund interesting. Is appropriation to Heffin's right there, twenty-five thousand, um, which is what we've been budgeting for them, I don't know if. That's what the last, I'm just going, I have no idea on that, I'm just going by what we've given in the past. Um, what makes this one interesting is we have all this money available for economic development. And that's something that I would like to discuss, so, something that I'd like to get some ideas on. As far as what we're going, because that's gonna be about a hundred eighty-one thousand seven hundred available for economic development expense. Uh, I, that's, and that's where I have it budgeted, that's not a decision that has to be made tonight by any means. But it's, like I said, I know I brought that up a few times, I'd like to continue to have that conversation, whether it's. You know, whatever it may be, no, eh, I, I believe that we have a pretty good opportunity here to really make a pretty good impact on the community. And so I, I'd really like to, uh, eh, you know, have those conversations early and have a good plan.
You think that could include our housing, our potential housing project out here?
I, I do believe that could be used for housing.
That'd be used for economic development, but. That'd be used for economic development, but hides what that is.
Yeah, it it's, yeah, I know that we have. Part of having economic development is having housing available, and so I do believe that that can be used for that housing. I'm going to skip some of our smaller funds, like special parks of rec, that's our liquor tax, that that all has to go to. Money that's spent in the parks, one question I would like to point out in the special street fund. Is right now I have some excess money going towards capital. And this is, and right now, why I have that there, like I've explained before. And so this is all of the money that we get from our asset sales tax. I have that coming in at. Four hundred thousand dollars a year, our debt service on that is three hundred and three thousand seven hundred. There is, it leaves roughly about eighty-five thousand left for capital improvements. Um, or, you know, you could use this money in a couple of different ways. You can use this money for debt service on the bonds that we have, or you can use this money to actually go towards the streets. And I think when we get to the street fund, I'd like to kinda point some things out there. And really, you know, that's a good conversation to have as far as, how how can we make the biggest impact on the streets? Cause really fixing the street funding was, you know, one of my main ideas of this entire budget season. You know, because right, we we had been running a few budget deficits there, I really wanted to try to free up as much as possible. That's why our salaries look so much different at administration, I think I've explained that a few times. It was really kinda get that, get that salary, get that personal cost out of the street fund. That way we can actually do something with the streets of high, the streets of High Wafa, put as much money towards it, get a good plan going forward. And, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I keep interrupting you.
No, you're okay.
Um, we have a balance that we haven't paid on our street project, right?
There is a balance that we haven't.
Is that on this money or is that?
Uh, that that isn't the fund balance of this project, eh, of this fund here, and so in this fund we have. A million dollars in fund balance alone, but that does include that balance that we haven't paid towards that street project. And so.
Kind of my question is what the balance is, I guess.
I think like that, the last time I looked, we had about one point three million in there. As far as that fund balance goes, but quite a bit of that's tied up in that one project. And so e- even though we have quite a bit of fund balance, you know, quite a bit of that's kinda tied up, really. And we have a, and we have another chunk of that that's tied up, and what we've agreed to put towards the traffic signals at first in Oregon.
Yeah.
But we do have fund balance there, comfortable fund balance, I would say. And so special street, like I said, that's a topic of conversation, like I said, does not have to be decided on tonight. But, you know, something to keep in your heads as far as, uh, what we would like to see going forward on that. Um, when we get to parks and rec, and so what these numbers reflect here. Is, like I said, go ahead.
Sorry, I I'm I'm a little behind, but the economic development. Are we, can, are we or can we reimburse? Um, the money that we spent for engineering out there on that housing development with that money to the CIP?
I do believe that is possible, it's something where I don't have a budget in here now, which would actually save some money out of that. Um, lots of property tax, it's something that I wanna make sure that I get right. But make sure that we can do that, I do believe that's possible, I'm pretty sure that we can.
Good, I just.
I'll be good.
That that's a very good question, I I'm pretty sure that that is very possible, which is like I said, that would save money from what I have. In there to reimburse throughout that, uh, for from the property tax for the citizens every year. Cause I believe that number was right around fifteen thousand, if I remember right. So I would take fifteen thousand off of the, uh, property tax, what we would need for, what we would need for property tax, potentially. Uh, parks and rec, like I said, on this one, I'll kinda zoom this in too, these are, I'm in the revenue part of it. Back to where anybody can see anything, alright. So the two hundred and eighty-four thousand, that is the revenue neutral. And if you come down to go to the end of this. What you'll notice is where right now I have a ninety-eight thousand six ninety-three deficit there. And that is due to CIP, and so I'm going to share with what we have. In the CIP for this next year and what we have proposed, like, and and these are those. And even with a software, anything that, any kind of capital improvement plan. Um, how we fund this, and that, and what projects actually do get funded. Or where the, or where that question lies. And so parks and rec, we have in there for CIP for twenty twenty-six, right now what I have. Is seven thousand dollars, that's a reimbursement, and that's a reimbursement for five years. So that's for that track, so that's for that parks tracker that we have bought this year, we spent thirty-five thousand two thirty-one. And so that number just represents a reimbursement back into the CIP fund for that money that has already been spent. Uh, we have parking lot lights for Brunton Park, we have that down at seven thousand dollars for twenty twenty-six. That is a parking lot light that we bought this year, that's that's a price that I got. Uh, Fisher Center loft and hardest room flooring, that's twenty-three thousand for next year. LED replacement for the ball fields, this is another one of those continuing cost type of the things. And I have thirty thousand in that for next year. And then what we figured, when I, when I did this, I had Stoneberg Electric out of, um, Ireland came out. And so we had some, we had one of our lights that went down there at Brunton Park, and so I was talking to him about it. And I was just asking, okay, if we're gonna do one field per year and convert all these to LED. How much would that cost? And he had given me a price, uh, just a rough quote, he hadn't even really looked into it yet. But he thought maybe around thirty thousand dollars per field, that's why you see that continuing cost there. Um, that's one of the things that, uh, I know that it could be very necessary going forward. The bulbs that we do have out there, they still make those bulbs, it's not something that we have to do. It's just, it is just something that I know that we've talked about in the past, you know, kinda converting some of these ballparks over. But like I said, these are some of those decisions that, you know, need to be made. As far as like, what we can actually fund, what we're comfortable funding. And the other one is key card entry for the Fisher Center. I don't have a plot snow in there for next year, I think we're okay with the fleet that we have. Um, I have that in twenty twenty-seven, and about every two years for a new mower. And I'm going to get a different mower out of like, say, the, uh. Public books departments as well, to move the airports and things like that, kinda share that cost among a couple of funds. That way we're not hitting just one fund, or especially the property tax completely on that. So that's kinda what I, that's that's what's proposed inside that, that's that ninety. Some thousand dollars that, you know, we're seeing here, that's not completely all of it, I guess. What else is there, what am I missing? Seventy, that's seventy-four thousand of that ninety-seven thousand is, and the other, right now what we have with the other one. Is the rest of that is a transfer to the pool, and I can get to that when I get to water. But what I, what I've had to do with that transfer to the pool is water budget was. We know that we're gonna have to probably replace a well pump next year. Add a transfer to the pool out of the water budget for forty thousand, that is something that we've done for a very long time. It really kinda helps, you know, keep, keep those property taxes down, but. I could not make that work, I could not make those numbers work in the water fund for next year, as far as making that balance out. And so I transferred that, transferred to the pool, back to Parks and Rec. We've also taken that as the general fund in the past, but I've taken that that entire transfer to the pool out of the, out of Parks and Rec. And so that's why there's that difference in that number this, for this next year. Um, as far as the actual expenditures on the Parks and Rec revenue side. You know, a lot of it we have, I, it looks probably very different from the previous versions that I've sent, it's cause I've taken a lot of those line items out. And so, for example, are, when we get to the recreation. Like ev- eh, events expenses, we used to have all those events spelled out each one of them. And now I have events revenue and events expenses, and that really kinda helped. Get the budget into something that we can handle here at the administrative level. These are things that she could still track individually, but all I can is combine all those expenses into one number. And have just one line item, one item for both. And so a good, a good way to say that is, for whatever she gets in revenue for an event, she expends. And so it it's, it pretty, it it breaks even as much as. Some events you're gonna probably spend a little bit more in expenses than you're gonna get in revenue. Other events like slope it's sable, for example, you know, it was two hundred dollars a team, she had nine teams that are this year. You know, that's eighteen hundred dollars in revenue, there's very little expense to that. You know, eh, the adult slope it's league really does kinda help on itself. Other events you might have a little cost overrun, and as far as the supplies go. Except for, it does even out in the end. Um, we don't, we don't expend more in the expenses than we do in the revenues, is a good way to put it. And so they will just kinda, it it self-funds itself. So you'll see that transfer to the pool here, um, the transfer to ca- the capital reserve. If if we decide to go that route. Um, but of course we have parks at Fisher Center and there too, parks. That's something that, you know, that's something that we definitely need to talk about as some of the, um. Maintenance of the parks, I think is something that I really wanna focus on. I really wanna make sure that we're maintaining the parks that we do have at a very high level. You know, eh, I, I don't know, we have a couple of trees, like Crushy Park, for example, right now. That need to be taken out, we have one that's just completely dead, one that's hollow on the inside. And so, you know, it's good, it's little things like that, I don't think it's going to add up to a lot, but. You know, little things like that, we need to make sure that we're budgeting appropriately for. And so I'd like to stop and see if we have any comments, questions, anything like this at this point. And food benefits, this is another, I'm gonna zoom this in just a little bit here. This is another one that affects the general fund, or affects our property tax. And as you can see, with our, once again, this, this really has not changed from it at all from the last time that I showed you. Right now we're about fifteen thousand dollars short, as far as, uh, revenues and expenses go. You know, that's, it's not a terrible number to try to make up, but it's, you know, it's always a. It's always a, something to point out that that does affect our, how much property tax that we would need, we would need a little bit more property tax to make that up. Um. I'll move to special highway, cause this is an area that I'd really like to point out, yes, go ahead.
I've got a quick question.
Mm-hmm.
On the, uh, group health insurance.
Yes.
The estimate that you've got in there or the budget amount, you already talked with. You talked with a couple of different companies on that, or?
Yeah, so, you you still have, we'll be going with a broker like we have in the past. And we'll be discussing that with several companies, they usually go out. Like we did this last year, we had United Health, we had Aetna, we had Blue Cross Blue Shield. Um, we had several different companies that they talked to throughout that process. Another thing I'd like to point out is we're going to move that to, we always used to, um, renew our policy in May. And we're gonna move to a January first renewal, that way it matches our fiscal year as well. That way our, if, yes, our, it'll, it'll, that matches the fiscal year, but we aren't going to do that in January this year.
That's your best conservative guess about what.
That is my best conservative guess, so what I did, I took. The number that we're paying this year, and that's our total, what our total plan would be. And one number that we're paying this year, and that's adding ten percent of that.
Ten percent's optimistic, don't you think?
Yeah.
We can be very optimistic.
They say we have honest, superior years.
Thank you.
We can hope.
So, that's a, when we get to special highway, this is our street fund. What I'd like to point out here is if you come to the bottom. You know, a lot of this, we have asphalt, we have rock, we have a lot of different line items here. But when we get to the bottom line here in the street fund, we're gonna have about seventy-six thousand and fifty-one dollars. And that's going towards, um, the streets themselves. And so you can add the rock, you can add the asphalt into that, so if you add another forty thousand dollars in on that. They're going to be spending about a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars on that. On the streets, so that's how much money is available, there is some money in here, transfer to capital reserve, and that, and that is what we've. Um, suggested that we do this next year, we would like to trade in our wheeled skid loader for a track skid loader. And and that's really, it it's all about the pressure on the ground, so when we do work in town, especially. Um, the wheeled skid loader could really leave a lot of ruts, it can, really, if it gets into mud. Eh, you know, it gets really difficult, it leaves people's yards looking really bad. And so, what we like with a track skid loader, it's it's lower pressure, it spreads that out. And it just allows us to make it, to do a better job. As far as what the finished ju- finish work looks like, this is why on. A good example of this is what they've done on Third Street down by Pottery Army. That we had, we actually rented a track skid loader, just, just for that, just so we can actually make that look decent. You know, our finish, we want our finished product, we wanna be moving people's yards better than what it was before we went in. It is always our goal, and it's something that, you know, it's something that we'd like to work on. Um, I know we've fallen short in the past on that, but you know, it's something that I've really liked, that I've really, uh. Reiterated to all of our crew, and they really take pride in the work now, they're doing a great job, I. I really do believe that, but that's why the track skid loader instead of the wheeled skid loader. Um, but like I said, we have about a hundred and sixteen thousand here, and if you add that number to. The number that we have left in the, uh, special street fund, that gives us about two hundred thousand dollars a year that we could put towards streets. Of course, uh, fifty thousand to capital reserve, that number can come back into that as well, so. Roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year, that's if we use that money that we get from that sales tax.
So you're thinking, you're thinking that you're splitting that between streets and stormwater, that's?
That's correct.
A- and have you taken credit for a trade-in allowance for the old one?
I have not. And so, I mean, a hundred thousand was probably over budgeting for that, a hundred thousand would be buying that brand new off a lot today. And so that that wouldn't even be a bid price for something like that, and that doesn't take any allowance for the trade-in. So I actually expect that number to be less than one hundred thousand, but, and that, what I asked. But how much should I budget for a track skid loader, similar to the size that we have, that way all of our attachments work? Um, a hundred thousand is what I, is what they gave me, it's probably over budgeting there, yes, go ahead.
Um, how many hours are on our skid loader?
That one I don't know, eh, that's something that I'd have to look at. The skid loader is actually one of the pieces of equipment that gets used quite a bit, I know, eh, it was. I I'd have to look at that, I I don't even have a guess on that.
I was just wondering if we've looked into just buying tracks for our wheeled skid loader, and then you have both options.
Okay, yep, that is a good point, I think, uh, I think that was brought up to me before too, yeah.
Yeah.
I think Tom had brought that up at one point too, and so that that is also something that we could look at.
At one time you were thinking about buying that attachment we rented to do Moral Street to tear up the.
Yes.
You you still thinking about that, or?
I am still thinking about that, that that attachment actually isn't very expensive as far as, as as far as some of this goes. I mean, some of this, I, I believe that some of these attachments, maybe I could work into just a regular budget.
Okay.
I say, I'm gonna wait for Sean to get back, he's been on vacation all this last week. And I was going to talk to him about that, cause I know more, we actually wanna rent the same attachment. And we want to do in front of that middle school this year, before school starts to kind of, cause they, that's one of the roughest spots in town, so. We wanna get that done this year as well. But we wanted, we're talking about that attachment, there's another attachment that he had talked about, getting that would help us, I think it was more of a. When we spread the asphalt out like what we just did on Industrial Drive, there's an attachment that he can use that'll spread that. He can choose the thickness of it, it don't, it doesn't lay down like an asphalt machine that you'd see on the highway. But it's something that'd give us a more uniform thickness on that.
Okay.
Can he, he kinda make that work a little bit easier and more effective, really. And so that's what we're looking at the special highway fund, debt service is not done yet. Eh, but that's pretty easy, that that is, uh, money in, money out, does not affect the property tax budget at all. That's all transfers in and what we pay out. I just, I, there's a, just a few of these new bonds that I need to make sure, what the interest on the principal, that's a big twenty twenty-five bond. And it's also the North, uh, Sewer Project, I need to make sure that I have that right, I'm waiting for audit to come back before I can get those numbers down. But that one's pretty easy.
Didn't, didn't you say we had a surplus in that fund?
In debt service we do, we are using some of that surplus in the debt service to pay off a. In debt service, we do. We are using some of that surplus in the debt service to pay off a twenty eleven bond and the twenty twelve bond.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Indeed. So if we come down to the history center, once again, this is the money that we receive every year. From. I'll zoom this in just real quick, explain it real fast. This is the money that we get for this building. Every year from uh the trust. And so this is just like I said. We get twenty two thousand every year. Right now I have thirty three thousand in expenses. That that's not going to be exactly correct. A lot of that's an elevator maintenance contract, especially if we. Do the uh upgrade next year. But as you can see, we do, we just don't have enough money in that one. In that one budget to accommodate that uh upgrade that we need to do the elevator. And so that that's why it's not coming out of uh the history center. You know, we have a lot of smaller funds that I needed to leave out of our budget, like walking trail hasn't been there for a long time. Let's get to. Post landing is that fund that we have that ninety thousand still left in? Pool. I'd like to explain something really quick about the pool. Um, the reason that we transfer that money in and the reason that there's a it's all there's a budgeted. Deficit in that pools because we budget the salaries in the pool like we're open every day all year long. Our but our salaries only ever really come in about sixty percent of what we budget. And so I really want to be careful, especially next year if we're going to take those transfers out. Of the um Parks and Rad Fund, because I really don't want to budget for that, then have that hit our property tax. So I want to budget as close as I can to that. Um, as far as the pool expenditures go, that way we're not I'm not over budgeting for that and, you know. Making people's taxes go up when they don't need to. Um, so that that that's just the kind of a quick explanation of why the pool budget looks the way it does right now. A lot of times what we do is we wait till after the season to actually make any kind of transfer at all. That way we can get that number correct. And so what we have budgeted for the transfer is always what we transfer. So I wanted to be careful. Water is a fund that I'd like to, is a fund I'd like to talk about quite a bit. Um, just real quick. Like I said. If you if you go through the water thing, you'll notice that you have several line items that are very similar. Uh. You know, sixty one thirty three. Is water system maintenance. And a large chunk of that is our water tower contracts. That's any kind of contract we have with equipment maintenance. Uh, biggest one is obviously our tank maintenance. Uh, in here, in equipment maintenance. Is where I have that money budgeted. So that'd be sixty one twenty one. I have that money budgeted in there to replace a well pump next year. Got a canal swell. And so that's why, you know, we don't have a lot of. Extra expenditures in here. The budget is, the budget's healthy enough, something I'd like to point out. Uh, chlorine in Florida this year, you see the projection here of eighty two thousand. This is a. Something that we normally budget about thirty thousand dollars in. That's that excess salt that we had to pay for this year. That's why sometimes when you go through and you see those projections that are much, much higher, that's because we had a very large one time expense. And I I don't expect that to go forward going into, you know, the. Upcoming years. And so that's why I I didn't up that budget accordingly. Salt has gone up for about sixty five hundred dollars alone now. That's why, that's why I've upped that budget to thirty five thousand. It doesn't leave a lot at the bottom for capital outlay. Right now I have. A rider of six hundred ninety six dollars, but we're to the positive. And so that is good. And so Capital Reserve next year, you know, we really need to, we really need to deal with that with that well pump before we. Start talking any kind of capital as far as uh the waterfront goes. I didn't put that boring machine in there because of that. You know, these are those business funds that we have to. We want to make those balances balance as much as possible. Like I said, this one. Six hundred ninety six dollars to the positive right now.
The the chlorine um five thirty thousand and twenty five and then I. Then projected was eighty two thousand.
That's correct. And that's because what had happened was our supplier hadn't billed us for any kind of. Salt that we've been getting for, I believe it was two years, wasn't it? Year and a half. And so that bill came in all at once. It was right around fifty thousand dollars for that one bill. Did it two thousand? Yes. And so that's why you see that disparity there as far as as far as assault goes. Um, some of the I had just, I'll go over real quick, just give it, let everybody know what I have for the. Um. Sewer department, before I get to that. What they what they're suggesting for next year is just belt press maintenance in the country club basin. I'll move back to the sewer department real quick unless we have any other. Questions on water. We'll move to sewer real quick. So if we, I'm gonna zoom this in as well. Explain why some of these lovely are. And so if we come down, that's all of our contractual. Um, equipment maintenance, once again, I may have sixty thousand dollars in there. Part of that is due to, and we do need a pump that needs to be replaced. Is that is that correct, Bruce? Is that fifty words bomb?
Yeah.
That that will come out of that equipment maintenance. Um. We have the twenty thousand for the UV suit. We have the UV system that we do the maintenance on every year. We did that this year. I have that budgeted for this next year as well. Uh, as far as the capital improvement actually goes for them. It's it's harder to see in this one than it is. Because it's it's a, it's a capital expense, it's a transfer out, but it's. The way that they did this one's a little bit different. Um, I have budgeted for that belt press maintenance and what also cleaning out the basin within this fund. Um, it leaves about ninety and twenty four dollars to the positive. As far as what we're, while we have a sewer fund. So we pretty well balanced out there. As far as what we have in the sewer fund. Um, do I have any questions on why any of these line items look like?
I had a question on the the basin that we had to clean out for the golf court. Country club, did we get enough money back from them to offset that?
Yeah, so um Becky Burger was here and she had me go through and I I I sat down and I tried to figure out what the costs were for. You know, what we needed to do as far as upping the contract there. But so what I did, I wrote that we're cleaning that basin out and kind of recouping some of that cost. And so I we did deal with that. Uh, two years ago when we redid our contract with them, that that is a reason why we asked for a little bit more, was knowing that we need to clean that base now.
I I don't remember what that looks like, but can we clean that out with our vacuum truck?
Uh, we cannot. And so that that is something that we'd have to hire a company to come in and do, but we want to make sure that we do it. The last time that we did it, we hadn't done it for about ten years. And so what allows us songs to compact over time? And and that's why our costs were so high. We want to do, we want to make sure that we're doing that. Fairly often, that way we can do it for less of a cost. It's less of an impact. I I'm correct in saying that, right, Bruce?
Yes.
Okay. And so like I said, our airport fund is, the airport's kind of a tough one. There's just not a lot of money there. Um, something that we probably could hit, talk about. Is our hair rental, you know, we. Our right now, our hair rental is five, it's uh fifty dollars a month. For any one hanger. And so it only brings in about fifty four hundred dollars a year. All the rest of that is land rent. And so that's really the only two revenues that we have coming in. We don't have a lot of costs as far as it goes, as far as maintenance goes, but something that I'd really like to talk about. Is getting some kind of maintenance costs as far as the runway itself goes, getting the right type of grass. Making sure that we're rolling it, things like this, just common, just common, very um. Easy maintenance tasks that I think we can do. I'm not really too concerned about the airport budget, but. Yeah, I just like to point out that we don't have a lot of. Uh, resources available in airport um as far as the budget goes. Um, it's just kind of a tough one. Just the land rent, that's really all all we have there. And so right, unless we have gone through all the major funds. That I have here. Um, I'd like to open it up to any questions that anybody might have. Before we move on.
Well, I I will say, uh, we. So we we established. Before we started talking about uh budget, that we could basically stay revenue neutral with a surplus of twenty five thousand dollars ish. Um. We also. Have talked today that the water department, sewer department's in good shape. We have a surplus of cash coming in every year. Um, for taxes, for roads. We have a surplus for economic development. Uh, and they're actually substantial amounts. So I guess. What um. Why are, why are we even looking at raising taxes at this point?
Yeah, I think my question is because we do, although we do have a surplus in property tax revenue coming in. That would not fund any kind of capital improvement at all as far as police cars go, anything like that. We wouldn't have any. Yeah, that that's just surplus that we would have as far as operating goes. If we wanted to do any kind of upgrade as far as. You know, software, anything that might come out of that fund. That's that's where that property tax increase is coming from. It's coming from that capital improvement plan. We have, while we sat down with uh, I sat down with the department heads, so we, you know. What is it that we're seeing that, you know, what are our needs going forward? Now they, that's. And so this is something that we've come up with a plan. Then what we have to try to figure out is how do we afford that? And how do we move forward? What what do we fund? And so that that's where, that's where that money does come from though.
Well, I guess I'm just looking at it as. I mean, do we, we need to set a benchmark of what we feel comfortable with. Before we even try to figure out like what we're gonna do. I mean, you don't. You you get a salary and and you set your budget off of your salary. You can't. Are are we looking at what projects do we want to do? And then we're gonna set on how we're gonna pay it. It seems backwards.
Well. See, as I'm trying to, as I've tried to propose, okay, if we did everything, this is what it would look like. And so when it when you come with the capital improvement plan, there was a lot of things on this one. The last time with the capital improvement plan, it was. Approved as a as a red. And so all the revenues I came in for that, it was. It was all funded. And so the, you know, everything that was in there was funded as far as that capital improvement plan went. And that's why you see some of those big differences between. Year to year as far as what those revenues were, especially with parks and arc. You know, you could go back there to. The revenue side on. You know, let's go to twenty twenty four. They're probably, well, shoot, I just, here, let me go back. In twenty twenty four here, on the. Revenue side, you know, we brought in three hundred and thirty nine thousand, we budgeted three hundred and fifty seven thousand, the property tax revenue. And then the year after that, that's because like the original capital improvement plan was approved. But what we do, what we know, we talked about is how we were funding that. And so that next year, twenty twenty five budget went back down to two hundred and eighty four thousand. And right now, as far as revenue goes, that's why I haven't. Messed with the revenues at all, because we haven't decided. What we're going to do as far as that capital improvement plan goes. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't have a plan for capital improvement. It just means we have to be smart about how we're funding it, that's all.
All right. The capital improvement things. It's pretty new in the last year or two. I guess I you have to ask like. How are we doing it? But we're. Um, just funding out a general fund probably.
No. Doing that before.
And so I guess, I guess we're what? Where are the? The avenue that we were using before we had C I P. Where where are those funds at that we were using up until what just last?
Yeah, that's correct. And so. What what some previous uh budgets were, we would use the capital file, the capital line item itself. So instead of transferring this money to the capital improvement plan. You would actually just spit that money out of line items and what? And so every budget, if you get down with, and usually that's an eighty nine ninety number, that's a capital expense. Um, every budget has one. And so whenever we would budget for any kind of capital improvements, it would come out of eighty nine ninety. And so what that caused, there's a lot of fluctuations in that budget. I know. Back when I used to do water budget, you know, one year I budgeted for a. Um, hundred thousand dollar backhoe to come out of that. And 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 like I said, what I can cause is a lot of. Up and down fluctuations of that budget. And if you go back through our. You know, our different funds, you you'll you'll see that in the income and you'll see that in expenditure as far as I really that um. There are those fluctuations there. And that's, that's really what I'd like to avoid. Does that have a really effective budget year to year? It makes it really, it makes it really tough to plan for the future that way.
Yeah, I understand. I just, I I'm just trying to help other people understand, you know, what C I P plan is. And how new it is to the the city. And so I. Um. I think that's just important, that, you know, this C I P plan that we have raised taxes. Basically, uh, two years ago, sixteen point seven percent. Now this year, we're looking at even more. So it it's, I I don't want it to, I don't want it to be looked at as a slush.
No, definitely not a slush. I'm like I said, everything that we have in there is going to be used for its intended purpose. Um, definitely nothing like that. Um. Like I said, with that capital improvement plan, then and and that's why I kind of wanted to go. It was actually in that capital improvement plan. That way everybody knows. You know, while while we're talking about as far as capital improvement goes. Um, these are, these are the types of things, especially on some of our parks. I know some of our long term planning, we had like. Uh, field D upgrade out of Bloom, out of Bloom Park. That's something that we could use for, you know, it's a very large expenditure. And that that's why some of our larger expenditures are always going to be four or five years out. Because we don't know how we're going to pay for that quite yet. We don't know if there's grants available for things like this. That's why they, that's why within the C I P plan itself. There's money out there available, there's a buy down for grants. You know, income things like that. And and so. Some of your very, very large ones, I know that one was like a hundred thousand dollars. And Stacy's wanting to budget for a concession stand. You know, that's a two hundred thousand dollar expenditure. But this is something that she actually wants to raise funds for. I don't ever expect that to be like, say, in the next year's budget until we know that we can do that, that having a huge impact. On um the C I P plan itself. I don't want, I don't want the C I P plan, the way that we fund it to fluctuate up and down um every year dramatically. I really, I would really like to say, okay, I've talked to Don McGree about this. As far as getting a dedicated equipment replacement program in there too, which is really the other side of the C I P plan. Um, talking to uh the. Police department, you know, I've been talking with them. Donald hasn't been doing that one. But I've been talking with them. We, I've been talking to the public works department as far as getting an actual equipment replacement program going. Making sure that we get rid of the old equipment when it needs to go. We have some trucks that have very, very high miles that we just. Obviously dump money into them. You know, we we, we put a funding on the truck this year that honestly, the funding was probably worth more than the truck. But now it's, and now it's kind of hard to get rid of because there's nothing wrong with it. But but uh. But we want to make sure that we'll be placing these trucks at in a timely manner, but also in a. In a manner that's um appropriate too, just because it's, like I said, just because a truck's. Twelve years old, it it only has forty thousand miles on it sometimes, doesn't mean that that truck necessarily needs to be replaced. We just want to get something going that we can sustain going forward. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I just, uh, in the last few months, we've bought a. A tractor from C I P fund, which it should be. Um, refunded and we've uh bought engineering for land for seventy five thousand. And both of those items were never discussed about even having C, using C I P funds for. And so that's why I just don't want this to be turned in, turned into a pot of gold where anything that comes up, we just grab it out of C I P.
It's definitely not, the intention of the C I P fund is for. You want to make sure that you're trying to figure in. You know, sometimes there could be things that could come up. That, you know, do need to be replaced right now. And you can use capital improvement funds for things like that. But really, you don't, you really want to try to avoid that as much as possible. Um, you really want to use that C I P plan for what what its intended intended purpose is.
And I would agree with that. I just, again, it's, you know, it's a once versus needs thing. And I, I kind of feel like the C I P fund. Uh, we're, it, it's more of, uh, once versus needs. And so we just need to be mindful of that. I'm just not interested in. Raising taxes a bunch to, uh. To fund this right now.
No.
I do, I do want to see that we keep moving forward. I mean, no, I'm not a big fan of raising huge, huge amount of taxes, but at the same time. If we just maintain, then eventually that's gonna, that's gonna jump up and bite us. Um, that's why I'm really interested to see what the C I P, I mean, I don't know that I can. Put a number I'm comfortable with without seeing the full extent of what. You know, our departments are saying they'd like to see. And then that's what's great is as a group, we can decide. You know, with the input from the department heads and you on what is the most important we need to get to.
Yes.
But I, I hate to even use a slush fund because that's such a negative connotation and that's anything I would ever. Even halfway think, I would never think of that with the city budget that you've done for this last year or the year before. So that's just, nobody knows, this is not good.
Well, and, but the reason I say that is because we spent a hundred and ten thousand dollars of that money and it was not intended for C I P. So, or it was not, the, the money that was in C I P was not intended for those objects. And so. Our track record has already showed that we're using this money for things. That are not on our list of items that we want to upgrade. And you made a valid point. Um, you know, we need to maintain the items that we have already and. Adding anything right now is, is, we just can't afford it. So. We need to just make sure that if we're gonna have a C I P fund, it needs to be used for the items that we've agreed on. And I don't feel that, that we have any plan for even the funds that are in C I P right now. And I also feel like that's why we were able to spend a hundred and ten thousand dollars of it for a tractor and for engineering.
Yeah, well, I definitely, I mean, that's what the plan is. So we're gonna come up with a plan, but. You can't, nothing's a hundred percent guaranteed. Like you said, there are some things that come up. I mean, ever since I've been on the commission, there's times where things have come up that we need to find money for. And somehow micro is managed and, and you're doing the same, but. They said, I mean, that's why it's great that we're starting this early. We can, we can continue to move forward and discuss what we need.
Yes, and I think it's a good point to, you know, to get everybody in here together, but it's something that I know in the next two meetings that we have in August. We're going to discuss these, this matter is going to be on the, this is gonna be something that we'll discuss at both meetings in August. And so we're gonna have the department heads here at those meetings to really discuss that C I P. Um, you know, and, and then we can start figuring out. It's not something that, you know, I'm not putting a huge number out there, something that, anything that I would actually propose as far as a budget increase went. I was just, it's kind of a high level of, I'm saying, okay, this is what our, uh, department heads are telling us. Um. And so it was just kind of like, if we did everything, this is what it would be. And now we need to move forward from that point and figure out, I mean, it could be that, you know, we decide that. You know, we can't go up this year. And that's fine. Operating costs can stay the same, but. As far as actually funding C I P, some of these, some of these items that, you know, we've been discussing here tonight. Um, those would not be able to be, um, accomplished within that budget. But like I said, we, we, these are, there's a reason why I would not propose like a seventeen percent budget increase or. Whatever it was, twelve percent, I can't remember what it was. Brian, did you have that number? Eighteen, so eighteen.
Which I, when we brought this up, I think everybody on the commission said that we're not interested in eighteen percent. I did, like I said, this is the first step, or this is, this is what's frustrating is why the city has to give a number, a specific number as opposed to. Same night, the school board comes out and says, yes, we're gonna exceed revenue neutral and it barely makes a bit. So that's, that's the frustrating part is we have to give a number. I mean, I don't think anybody wants to do eighteen percent. That was never intent. But we gotta start somewhere. And, and also, Brad, I will appreciate that we're doing this during, during the, the actual meeting. And so now people can watch, they can go back and listen to it. Um, they're hearing it straight from you, so they know exactly what's being said. So I, I appreciate that you've. Moved it to the meeting instead of a workshop afterwards.
It, it, what I would like to say is, I know, it, it, that was the intent. They'll say, make sure that people got good, got the information that they needed. Um, you know, my office is always open. Anybody that has any questions about budget, citizens. And I'm more than happy to answer any question that they might have, so that they can see where the tax dollars are going. I think that's. All the information that we've been getting out there is, you know, it's, it's very important to the public. That way they know exactly where the tax dollars are going, what is being spent on. I mean, I'm, I'm willing to bring them in, anybody who wants to, you know, go through these line items and show them how I do it. You know, show them the expenses go, coming in and going out, and why we budget, what we budget, things like that. Line item, pro line item, if they, if they would, if they want to, I think it was great to get, uh, public involvement. Um, the more that we can get, the better off we're, we're all going to be. Yes, go ahead.
I have a question. Um, on the budget, on a number of the funds, uh, you've already shown some capital transfers to capital. Some different funds, but they're not populated on the C I P yet.
Not yet.
My question, my first question is that. Uh, for instance, the special streets fund, we got eighty five thousand to capital. That comes out of a half cent, city sales tax. Do we have to track that that money is used for the appropriate type projects?
We do. And so this actually came up, I think, two years ago when we did the C I P. And so where I budgeted that money was actually added just to the capital expense. So it's kind of like that eighty nine ninety. Fund. So I wouldn't actually transfer that money to the C I P, just so we could track it within that, within its own fund.
Okay.
And so that, that actually happened to us with the, uh, special parts, which is our book attacks. We transferred twenty three thousand dollars out of that fund into the C I P. We have to make sure that we have careful accounting of that, that way, because that money does have to go towards those parts.
Okay.
You know, the, the, you know, stay long, that one's that, so.
And then on your commission action report. Um. Can you quickly explain, you, you're saying the current budget? Let me read this again. I'm interpreting your financial considerations paragraph that if you. Take the budget and put the twenty twenty six C I P plan in there with it. That our current, that our rate would be forty point one oh two.
That, that is correct. And that's what every project I would have in C I P. Um, our grade would be forty point one oh two. I believe we went, we had forty two. I, I can't remember exactly when we published, but it was more than that. Um. When I, when I went back through it and I updated all the numbers, updated all of our projections and everything. The, the budget started a little kind of coming to focus for me as far as what those actual expenses are. That forty point one oh two would represent. That's what it would be if we did every project that we have in the C I P.
And, and that's taking credit for these individual funds where it says transfer to, to capital. That would offset the, some of the expense on the C I P for the point on sick.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm asking that the right way.
I'm really glad you're doing this, uh, budget work session publicly. Um, I think a lot of people have some misconceptions regarding our last meeting. Um, I guess it was what, the fourteenth was our last meeting. It was filed by law by the nineteenth to notify the county clerk if we intended on exceeding the revenue neutral rate. We just set a bar because we had to. We couldn't make a decision right then and there when we haven't had any budget. Um, meetings or anything. I think a lot of information went out. Um, kind of half, half truths to what actually happened in this meeting. Um. And I just, I'm glad you're doing this so people understand. We, we're not looking at raising people's taxes eighteen percent. None of us want to do that. Um, we all care about this community. We all care about, uh, the city, the, the finances of the city, et cetera. And, yeah, I was kind of upset over the last, how the last meeting, everything played out. Um, what came out after the fact? Because the whole truth did not come out after the fact. It left everybody kind of hanging like, oh my, they're gonna raise our taxes eighteen percent. And that's not true. So I'm glad you're doing this.
Had a few people say the same thing to me.
I had a lot of people say, and I said, you need to listen to the meeting and you're gonna understand. The mayor, Commissioner Midendorf, both strongly emphasize that this is why we're doing this. Nobody wants to raise taxes eighteen, but I don't want to pay more eighteen percent increase in taxes anymore than anybody else does. But I think it's great that you're doing this publicly so people can see the, the process of how these budget workshops work. So I think that, you know, maybe they'll have some questions answered, so.
Yes, so moving forward, I know I'm going to have, there's gonna be at least two more. Uh, you know, there will be two more for sure. And, you know, there, there will be some kind of. Bigger presentations as to kind of some of the numbers that I've been seeing in the past as far as. I mean, I've had a lot of information out there for the public as well. And so I think it'll be good for them to see. As far as where our budget's been, where we've gone with it, um, where those real dollars are. And then that's what I want to, because it'd be, you know, I, like I said, I think I was, you know, talking earlier today. And, you know, I could, I could say, okay, well, we dropped our mill rate, you know, forty, I think it's like forty eight percent. Since twenty nineteen, which is true. You know, that, that is, that is a very true statement. But on the other side of that, you know, our property values have gone up fifty four percent. And so we've actually seen like a seven percent, uh, increase in real dollars as far as that property tax revenue go. And so it'd be, you know, it, it wouldn't be a good thing for me to say that. And I, so I'd like to have those presentations up there for people to really see what those hard numbers are. And really have them understand what our city budget does year to year. It took me a long time to, uh, get into it for me to understand it myself, but. You know, it, it's, once you get into it, you can really start breaking those numbers down. And I think that. This is something that I can, you know, anybody from the public would be more than easily able to understand. Uh, when you start talking about head of law and tax, mills and things like that, it can get very confusing. But one of, my whole goal here is to make sure that at the end of this process. The general public has a really good understanding about what we do here, why we budget, how we budget, and, and. And that we really do try to be careful. And then, like I said, just because, like we said, I think we all pointed this out this last time. Just because we voted to, or you, the commission voted to, uh, exceed the revenue neutral. Does not mean that we could not be revenue neutral if that was, if that was a decision. That still is a possibility. Um. It's just, it ma- make sure that people understand that. This is just, allows us to have a conversation as to. What we think that the city's needs are going forward, if that makes sense.
I like the idea of having, uh, the department heads come to a meeting and explain to us what their needs are. Um, you know, they definitely need to be a part of this process.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
I like that.
I'm just surprised at how much of that increase you've had over the years goes to the library. That was kind of an eye opener. And I, I appreciate the library. I'm not saying anything bad about them, but that's. That, that's a little bit of my hands being tied there, you know?
It does. Go ahead, Brian.
That's actually a solid point. And I'm, uh, the track record of the library, they've, uh, taken about the same amount every year. I wonder, is there a reason why we set the bar so high for them as well? And is this something that we need to address and lower the bar down so that they don't come and get another bill next year?
I mean, it's definitely something that was within the, uh, power of the city commission to set that tax levy. Um, cap, I guess, that levy cap. Um, it definitely, definitely isn't the power of the commission to do that. I don't know why it was ever set to seven point five. I know they did that back in twenty thirteen. They had originally set that million cap in twenty eleven. I think some state laws had changed at that time, allowing cities to do that. They went from six point five in twenty eleven to seven point five in twenty thirteen. And so I've tried to look back in some old minutes to see why that was. I've had a lot of luck in understanding that quite yet, but hopefully I can. Look back and maybe find that information out.
And I, I'd also like to add, you know, uh. We set this bar to exceed revenue neutral, but there's really zero reason to set it at an eighteen percent increase. If we have no intentions of going that high. And the reason I do say this is because we have to remember just two years ago, we raised it almost seventeen percent. And so the capacity of us actually raising it eighteen percent is actually still pretty fresh in people's minds. But that, yeah, the poss, it's possible. And so we've got to be mindful of that. And if you guys want to say, oh, well, we're just setting the bar high. Well, nine or ten percent is crazy high hike. And to say, well, you know, the school's doing this. I, I don't really care what the school or the county is doing. Or you don't need to be spending unnecessary money just because other people are taking taxes. That's, that's not fair to our public. And it's not our job to do that either. We don't worry about them. If we wanna. We want, maybe if we're worried about what they're doing, maybe we should run for school board or something. But to say, well, these guys are taking all this money. Maybe we can too. That's, that's not fair.
That is not something that I am intending with a capital improvement plan at all. This is just. Hey, I, I really liked what the idea, the original idea of the capital improvement plan was. The only, I think the biggest mistake that we made was funding that fully back in twenty twenty four. This is still having a capital improvement plan, even, even if we're not going to fund a certain project in, in. You know, this is something that would need to be updated every year as to see what our actual needs are. And, um, you know, it was just something that, it's just a plan to move forward. That's, that's all its intentions are. The eighteen percent was just if we funded everything. And so.
I, I understand that, but I mean, if you don't want the public to be worried about it and be confused, then don't set the bar that high.
Then don't put it out there that we're gonna give eighteen percent raise. I mean, that's online. Don't put it out there that the city's gonna raise taxes eighteen percent. We never said we're gonna do that. We've got to get somewhere, somewhere we can start with. And if people who vote in here can't trust us to do what's best. Then I guess, once again, as we see quite often on Facebook, that when people, when it's time to act, then they can change. But like I said, we don't put it out there, this is what we're doing. Self, real to work. That's all it is. Um, and my only comment about the school board is that it's such an interesting concept to the meaning. That one can say they're exceeding and it doesn't, doesn't cause anything, another one does. And we have to give a number and that's why it raises a boot ruckus. So that's my, this school board, um. I say, I'm excited to get the department heads in here so we can see what we can do with that capital improvement. Cause I agree, there is a definite once versus needs. But I also don't want to remain stagnant. Yes, I want us to keep our stuff. Maintained and operating, but I don't want our city to become stagnant because it's real quick. Till all of a sudden start going below that level instead of elevating. I want us to continue to elevate. However, that's gonna look. I don't know, Brad's gonna move us through that and we'll figure it out. So are we going to go into more detail on the C I P today or is that the next?
That'll be at the next meeting. We'll have the department heads here to kind of explain through what they have proposed of their C I P. Um, and we'll, we'll start that discussion. We'll go into detail on C I P in the next meeting.
Okay. What would it take to change the cap on the library? Fund?
Uh, I believe that's in my resolution. So there was a, there was. Is a charter ordinance asked to do that? And so there was an original charter, and that's what it would take.
Hmm. Yeah.
Go ahead. Sorry, there, there was a change in the state ball, uh, twenty eleven that allowed library boards such as ours to set their own. Uh, mill levy. And they're allowed to set a mill levy. So cities. Some cities, one of ours included, elected to pass a charter resolution to cap that. And like I said, that was before any of us were on here. So I don't know why it went from six point five to seven point five, but. Think they're pretty close to the cap right now. There's not a lot of room to go up, so.
And the library doesn't show up as a separate line item on our tax bill because it's a function of the city, right? Comes out of the cities.
Yes, it is a complicated, complicated relationship. Yes, it is a complicated, complicated relationship.
We're just a taxing entity to, to pull the money in, right?
That's true, yeah. So I know Brad's working with the library on their itemized budget as well. We just need to get a copy of that so we can take a look at it.
Thank you.
Certainly don't want it out there that I don't make a library, because I absolutely do, but that's just, that's rough. When it's, they get that much of the increase that we can't do anything about.
Yes. Anybody have any more questions, any more discussion on the budget as far, as far as tonight goes?
Well, like I, I said earlier, I, I'd still like to have an idea of where the commission's at for. How much they're willing to raise taxes. I mean, I, I, it's really hard to, to set a budget and go to your. Go to your leads without saying how much money we have.
Okay.
I mean, we, we've set the bar at eighteen percent, but everybody has said that we're not gonna raise it eighteen percent. So what is? You know, what is the bar? What's the realistic bar then?
So as I am going to wait step by step, I'm gonna listen to Brad and listen to my department heads and see what they had to say and then have a discussion. I don't have any, you can keep asking. I, I don't have, if anybody else says that's, that's fine, but. I don't, I'm, I said, I am very much a very methodical person, especially with something as complex as a budget. And Brad, I appreciate what you do to make this a. Easy, nothing's easy to consume about this, but you can alert. I'm going step by step, so I do not have a number.
I don't even remotely have a number because we've just started budgetary conversations. We still need to meet with department heads. We need to have more meetings. Once that happens, then things will move forward.
Well, I mean. Like, like I said earlier, it's just. How do you do your finances if you don't know what your roof is? That, that doesn't make sense to me, like, and, and we've done this in the past. Where, you know, department heads are, and I don't blame them, you know, they throw everything at it that they can possibly get. And, and then we come up with a, with a. Huge number of seventeen percent and try to fund everything, whereas it would just be easier to say. Hey, we feel comfortable raising three percent this year, four percent. This is how much money you guys are gonna get. Let us know what we can do. I, I, it just seems like a complete waste of time, like we've done every year. If we're, if we don't have a number of where we're looking at. Zero to eighteen percent's a ginormous amount of money. So. It's the difference between, you know, buying a Ford Focus or, or a Yukon. So you've gotta have some type of budget.
I'm also very proud of our department heads. I, I very rarely see anything frivolous that they've asked for. They're, they're usually pretty. Pretty straightforward on what they need. Um, I've, I've heard conversations Brad had with department heads too, like, no, that's not gonna happen. And they understand that. Um, and also it puts a little bit more on their shoulders too, if they're gonna be in public, we're talking about what they need. I don't think they're gonna. Put things out there that they just, you know, sure would be nice to have this. I think they'd get it too, because they as well don't wanna pay. A huge increase in taxes either. So we've got pretty good department heads that I trust to give us. Pretty good information along with the leadership of our city administrator. So.
I agree.
Any other comments or shall we move to the rest of our meeting? Yeah, find where we're at. Thank you, Brad. Tom, did you have anything else? You've been kinda quiet over there.
No, I'm taking in all the information.
It's a lot for the first time through.
It is. It's a lot. The budget is a lot comprehended.
Yeah, I mean, I still.
I'm thankful for Dave for going through it the way he does.
I agree. I, I maybe look over his notes every now and then just. Dave, did you have anything else?
No, I just wanna echo what you all have said, that I wanna hear what the needs are and the justification for the list, and then I'll decide. What I think we can do.
Hey, I think we're moving on to communications. Um, Brad, is there anything that?
Just the, so that's a hospital lunch and land invite reminder. We had that O K M dues letter. First got this, I actually first got this letter, um, a couple of months back. Okay, the league Kansas municipalities is going to change. Their dues structure. And so I didn't quite understand what that was going to mean for the city. It turns out that it's really not, it's probably any impact to the city as far as dollars go. And so I know that. What the league Kansas municipalities does is they advocate for, you know, municipalities from. The size of Robinson all the way to the size of Wichita. And so they, they're kind of a. They, they advocate the Kansas legislature as far as, uh, you know. Laws go, things like that, that could affect Kansas municipalities. Uh, they, we have a lot of good trainings for them. Then we do, we get, we go to the O K M conference. It's very good information. Very good information for everybody from, in my opinion, everybody that sits commissioners, mayors, myself. This year, I've even taken department heads with me because I really want them to learn that side of it. And so that way they understand some of the, some of what I talk about, wanna talk about. And so that's why, that's what the dues are for, for the Kansas leading municipalities. Other than that, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. Any questions for the commission? All right, we'll move on to gathering body comments. Um, I don't think I have any since I talked enough during budget, so I'm moving on to you, Dave.
I don't have anything.
Tom?
I don't have anything.
Brian?
Yeah, I mean, since it's budget season and. Um, I've brought this up before, but I would, uh, I would really like to see. Us consider not paying wages uh to the commissioner.
When you froze up.
You say it again.
Can you say that again?
If he comes back then.
I couldn't hear anything you said. I don't have anything. Thank you.
I believe he had said, what I thought out of that was he had talked about, um, the wages commissioners are paid every year. Um, that's what he was bringing up. That's what I heard from what he was saying there.
Then how's the staff gonna get their candy? I mean, that's something we can discuss later, I guess, since he's not on. Is there anything else from the fellow commissioners?
No.
I'm gonna hear your motion to adjourn.
Second.
I said I'd entertain a motion.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
It's a second cut.
Jane? Motion passed four zero.